A meeting to order. Looks like we are all present and accounted for. We have one additional agenda item, and that would be the Wild Turkey Federation Scholarship. And we will add that as item F on the agenda. Does anyone else have anything for the cause? Any additions, deletions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
That's what I heard. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Scheduled presenters. Excuse me. I would like to move up that pledge of allegiance item under new business to the next agenda item. Whether or not we can do that, we are. It was just my wish that we would start a tradition of the pledge of allegiance. I can see only positive things to do with it. A lot of our governmental agencies do it prior to meetings, and I feel like it's good for us. So, I would look for a motion to approve that.
Oh, a motion.
Pat, one. It was close.
Distance, yeah.
And the second?
Rob.
I'm Rob. Further discussion?
Do we have a flag? Right behind you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Let's stand and face the flag. And Pat will lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, scheduled presenters. Principal Tim Hoffman is here to discuss class registration for the upcoming school year.
Good evening. Chief President, you asked me to come and talk to you a little bit about what our registration numbers look like this year. And I put together just a presentation to give you some, a little bit of historical perspective back to the time when I started as high school principal. So you'll see the number of student requests for different courses and then the number of sections of courses that we've offered. So the first thing, and hopefully, I'm sorry that this is a little bit hard to see, but I've got the different courses that we offer. And I know that that's going to be a little bit difficult to see there, but... This is our ag classes. Anything that I highlighted in blue are courses that I have a little bit of a concern about. For example, the first course there is ag exploration. In the four years that I've been principal, that's been offered one time. Or that's actually... What's that? Whatever you want to do. Okay. That's only been offered one time because we've only had enough requests for that class to make one time. I will say this is, three years ago, we kind of imposed a limit of 12 as far as course requests. If we don't have 12 requests for a course, it gets dropped out of our schedule and then we go on to alternate requests for students.
Kim, I'm sorry, what does the blue represent again?
The blue are just courses that I have a concern about for one reason or another. They either got low enrollment or it's something that maybe the class only makes every other year. So for example, ag welding two is, it's a fairly popular course. We get requests for it. But given our shrinking number of students, when a lot of kids take ag welding one, the next year ag welding two makes. But the year, but then we don't seem to have as many kids take ag welding one. And the following year after that, it doesn't quite matter. So it's kind of been the trend with some of these courses. Companion animal science and horse and horsemanship are already offered every other year, but in the last few years, we've had problems having those classes make two. So, back to that number 12 as far as, just to put it in perspective, when we have about 12 students request a course, generally, we get about, we get about nine kids in that course. So that's kind of, in general, that's a rule of thumb that I think about for that. And that's a, you know, that's, again, when we do scheduling or when we look at whether we're going to offer a class or not, that's, that's got to be under consideration there. Home and farm maintenance is another one that, it has been doing well until here recently. And again, it's, I think it's just the number of students that we have to take those classes. I did not highlight natural resources one. We have a natural resources one course and a natural resources two course. My belief is that, given some changes in the science standards, that the popularity of that class is probably going to go down. At one point, students could take natural resources and it would count as a science credit. But it doesn't fulfill the standards that students need to get to meet that. So it looks like to me, if I'm looking at trends, that that's becoming a less popular course. Next into arts, and I put whether courses are elective or not. So ag and art are elective courses. Students have to take seven credits of elective courses throughout their four years in high school. Some, like arts, are required electives, if you want to think of them that way. To graduate, you need to have one credit of either fine arts or music. But art classes are ones that seem to be fairly popular. Art is probably the one department that has a gatekeeper class. Students are required to take art one before they can take any of the higher level art classes. So, in general, a lot of kids who are freshmen and sophomores end up taking that particular class. I highlighted drawing and design two and photography two. Those courses typically don't have enough students to have that course make by itself. But the art department has allowed a dual concurrent enrollment for those. So when drawing and design one is going on, if there are four kids that wanted to take drawing and design two, those classes meet during the same hour so that those kids can get that content. And it's the same thing with photography. Business is another, another department where there are a couple of concerns. The last two years, business manag-, or last, this year, business management did not make. And it looks like next year, business management will not make either. And personal finance, I highlight just because we've had some discussion in the curriculum committee about whether personal finance should be a required course or not. And I think Mrs. Hoffman can confirm, we've got about 75, 80% of our students at some point in high school take personal finance. Well, if you look at the numbers that we've had in the past in personal finance, in 11th, well, we had 134 requests for personal finance. And for next year, we're down to 34 requests for personal finance. So for whatever reason, that particular course has got a really smaller number of students who are requesting it. There are a lot of factors that could come into play with that. Last year was one of the first years, last year. This year, it's one of the first years that we've offered multiple sections of personal finance. We have three sections of personal finance this year. When we offer more sections of a class, typically that next year, we get through a lot of those kids who might not get it because they're juniors or sophomores. So we typically have fewer kids that request that class next year. And it looks like that's probably what's happening in that case. English is a required subject area, work credits for English. You look at our AP numbers, AP literature, AP composition, those numbers haven't changed a whole lot. There was one year, two years ago, I believe, that AP literature didn't make. But since then, the numbers have climbed back up. And in fact, for next year, we've got 29 students who have requested it. So that's a really good number. A couple of areas that I highlighted here are creative composition and novels and humanities. Creative composition and novels are oftentimes, they're both semester-long courses. They're oftentimes taught in opposite semesters. So the student can take creative comp one semester and novels the next semester. For whatever reason, those two courses have a smaller enrollment, or a smaller number of requests next year than this year. And if you look at humanities, humanities is actually two different courses. There's a classical humanities course, and that's the one that meets the year that they take the trip to Europe. This year is a classical humanities year. On those years, the requests are usually higher. Next year is a modern humanities year. And since I've been here, those modern humanities years, the requests have been smaller. So, and you can kind of see that as the trend goes through. The reason I highlight that is because that's a co-taught class. So I have two instructors that are teaching that class. I've got an English teacher and I've got an art teacher to teach that class. And the reason is because of just the content area. Students who take humanities can take the AP art history test. And generally, if they've taken both the modern and the classical, then they're qualified fairly well to do well on that test. But it creates an issue with staffing because when you look at that modern humanities year, and I've only got 12 kids who request that class, but I've got two instructors for it, you know, it just makes that number pretty small. We've tried to work around that a little bit with some supervision. So this year, if you go on an every other day basis, one of the teachers is teaching, one of them is doing a supervisory duty, and they alternate basically every other day with that. Spanish numbers haven't changed a lot in the last few years. I would say that the, if you see a declining number, it is because of enrollment. For example, if you go back to that Spanish one class on the top, where we had 103 requests for that, that was the year that Ashley's class came through. So that's the, kind of the bubble class we have right now. And you can kind of see that that's the trend there. Numbers of state typically good for Spanish. So that's a positive thing. I highlighted Spanish four, even though the... Spanish four. Every year but this year, Spanish three and Spanish four have been taught as a combined class. So Mrs. Melissimo has run that as a two-year curriculum. So if kids want to take both of those classes, they'll get a set of curriculum for one year, they'll get a different curriculum the next year and get both Spanish three and four. And it doesn't really matter what order that's done in. So some kids may get a four-three and some kids may get a three-four. But curriculum-wise, that's the way that class is worked.
Tim, have you seen any difference between numbers when you have eighth grade Spanish versus not having it and having them jump into Spanish one, ninth grade?
We have had eighth grade Spanish since I've been here. That's not been, that's changed.
Because I think that has helped our Spanish numbers a lot.
The only thing that has changed is there have been a couple of years in there where Mrs. Mercer has taught eighth grade Spanish and a few years that Mrs. Melissimo has. And that hasn't really seemed to change the number of students who request Spanish at all. Industrial arts, another area of concern is always building construction. Mr. Walter needs a certain number of kids to take that class so he can get the house built and not have to go crazy in June after all the kids are gone. And unfortunately, it looks like for next year, as of right now, we don't have as many kids enrolled in that as we've had the last few years. So we might be down a section in that area. But recruiting hasn't really started with students yet, so that'll...
What's the number you want to get in?
What's that?
What number do you want to get for?
Well, he wants to have sections of, what is it, between seven, eight, nine kids per class. And he'd like to have at least two classes one semester and three classes the next semester. So, you know, we're talking about, you know, eight kids in five sections, so mid-30s would be what he would want. And kids can take that both first and second semester as long as, you know, they're meeting the requirements of the course. So we've got a lot of kids who do that. We've got some kids who take it one semester and don't take it the next. So...
On the housing committee too, we've already discussed, when this happens, you know, we may do a... Building a whole house. Those are always good options and really great skills for those kids to learn. Sometimes they get just as much out of a remodel as they do the actual building of a home. So there's a backup plan. There's always a Plan B for numbers that might be a little bit lower. But every year I've seen this, I've never seen it stay low, and I think Kirsten could attest to that too. That's the one class that ends up going up.
Well, this is one of those courses that junior and senior boys, when they get their schedule and they see something they don't like, this is one that they'll typically come in and exchange a class for. Math, there are a couple of things I wanted to talk about with math. In the middle of the math numbers, 11th, 12th, if you look on the first line with algebra two, we had 149 students take algebra two that year. That was the first year of kind of a restructure in the math department as far as the order that courses are taught in. And it's also one of the first years for some new requirements. The state requires, right now, that kids pass an algebra two class to graduate from high school. So you're going to see, although, you know, as you go to the, to the right on the chart, our, our class sizes are getting smaller, our numbers in algebra two are staying high. And that's because of that requirement for kids to pass algebra two. So during that 11th, 12th school year, we had 149 kids take algebra two and no kids take geometry. That was the year that we made the switch. So we had a couple of different grade levels taking algebra two at the same time where we normally would have had one taking geometry and one taking algebra two. Couple of other things here. Intro to college algebra, since I've been here, has been a course that's only made every other year. And the math department felt that, given that a lot of colleges are requiring four years of math, we didn't really have, unless kids took the intro to analysis class, we didn't really have another option for kids to take four years of math. So they added the statistics and probability as a semester course to go along with college algebra. And kids responded to that very well. We've got about 30 kids who have requested those classes, and they'll be sandwiched together basically as one course this next year. And then the other one is the intermediate algebra, the one in the middle. Again, that's, that's a course that was added, or made a change when we did some of these curricular realignments. Think of intermediate algebra as a kind of a, if you take algebra one, algebra two, and you split it into three years, intermediate algebra is the end of algebra one and the beginning of algebra two. So that's a good way to think of that. We require free credits for graduation. I think that's what the state minimum number of math credits is. But we're seeing, Kirsten, more and more colleges are requiring more math.
The U of M for sure.
Yeah.
Graduating class 2015, they were on about four years of math.
Right. Music. I did, my first couple of years here, we had two different bands. We had symphonic band and we had concert band. For the sake of simplicity, I combined those numbers together for this chart for the first few years. So you can see that our numbers in music, in band, in choir have, they look like they're dropping. You know, we've typically had a hard time keeping kids from our middle school music programs going into high school. And part of that is just competition for different course offerings. But the numbers are relatively stable. We will have more kids than 50 in band next year. We have a few kids that always do band as an independent study because it won't fit into their schedule. We have a lot of kids that take band and choir. So, you know, they, they go to band one day and the next day they go to choir instead of going to each of those every day. So I think when I figured that in, there are about 12 students in there that go to both band and choir. So if you want to look at just the number of kids who are only in band every day, it's about 38 is what we had so far. Caveat to that is that a lot of kids that are in band end up in band the next year, don't get registered for it. I'm not really sure what the reason for that is. But since I've been here, I've, every year I get worried about where our band numbers are. And then I think the band directors go and start, you know, berating them to get signed up for band, and then they actually do come in to get signed up for band, so... Science. Again, a couple of courses that are highlighted there, I highlighted ChemCon because that's a course that, although we only have 11 requests for it this year, we're probably going to offer it next year anyway. Change in science curriculum was by, in 11th or 12th grade, kids had to take chemistry or physics. And a lot of kids are picking the chemistry route to go with that. ChemCon is a chemistry class, but it's offered at a little bit lower rigor level than our regular chemistry class. And it fits a need that we have in the high school. If we didn't offer that class and our only options were physics or chemistry, we'd have a lot of kids that wouldn't be successful at all. So the ChemCon class is important, and I think we're going to offer it even though we're below that, that minimum threshold limit. And then again, chemistry, again, we, you can see the numbers in chemistry have actually gone up. And again, that's that sci-, that new science requirement. That has nothing to do with enrollment. That has everything to do with the state requirements for that. One of the things you'll notice there is our robotics numbers. We started that class in 11th, 12th, and sadly, the numbers of kids who have requested that robotics class have declined. Not really sure why. I think a lot of kids have a preconception of what that is really going to be without reading the course description to know that that robotics class fulfills the physics requirements. So there's an awful lot of physics that they do before they touch the robot kits. And I think that is just something that kind of turns kids off. I think they just don't understand the reason for that robotics class in our, in our science curriculum. The first year I was here, we didn't have physics, and that was, I know, a big area of concern for the curriculum committee. But since that time, our physics numbers have been relatively good. So physics numbers have been pretty stable for the last few years, we're right around that 20 number. And I think that's a pretty good sign. One of the things that the change in the math curriculum let us do is typically physics would be a senior-only class because kids would have to have gotten through algebra two to be able to do the math in physics. But we rearranged the order of geometry and algebra two, so kids can take physics now as juniors and they don't have to take it just as a senior. Our social studies curriculum. First couple of years, we talked a lot about social studies cuts, but through some attrition with retirement, that, that issue has kind of resolved itself. I've got a few classes that are highlighted there, economics, human geography, sociology, and psychology. If you look at the economics numbers, it's a little startling that we had 133 kids that, or 133 requests for economics this year, and next year, we're down to 99. That is purely an enrollment issue. The junior class kids typically take economics with a few seniors that don't get through it as a junior. Junior class is that big class. Now that they're rolling into senior year, there'll be other things that they'll be taking. Mrs. Hoffman and I still need to figure out why the human geography numbers are where they are. We're both a little baffled by that because every senior has to take human geography or AP government. And when I add up the number of kids who have requested AP government and human geography, I don't get to that number of seniors that we have for next year. In fact, I'm not even close. So we've got to go through those registrations and find the kids who didn't request that and make sure that we fix those issues. WTEC. This is going to be new for next year. WTEC is, as you guys know, is the new technology consortium that we joined. Part of that is to offer interactive television courses. And it's, it's pretty new. We did a little bit of recruiting for that. We kind of made the decision to do that like two days before Mrs. Hoffman went into classes to register. So didn't have a lot of time to build much momentum with that. But we really think that when, when all is said and done next year, we'll have more than just the four requests that we have for WTEC courses next year. Because kids will see that there will be some classes that they can use to give them some flexibility in their schedule. And I think once kids see those courses in action, they'll be, they'll be a little bit more willing to take those courses. Before I go on, do you have any questions with, with anything that's come up with the numbers, with just strictly the numbers? Yep? Okay, a couple other factors that we look at when we're looking at scheduling is our PSEO numbers and then the numbers of students who end up taking online courses. You can see that our, our PSEO enrollment hasn't really changed a whole lot. And that's one of the ones that always is a little, have a little apprehension about that. Because when kids take PSEO courses, the money that is attached to them goes directly to whatever that post-secondary institution is. So, but we haven't really seen many more than this take PSEO courses. You know, since I've been here, that number has stayed relatively, relatively stable. And that, that is probably more a location-based thing than anything else. Because really, for kids to be able to make it to, it's a little far to make it to RCTC. I mean, by the time you get down there and get back and take a class or two, you've alone a whole day. St. Olaf has some enrollment requirements that make it a little bit more difficult for, for kids to take PSEO classes there. Inver Hills Community College is the one that our kids typically take classes from. And, and again, there's still that timeline there. By the time a kid drives up there, takes a couple of classes and drives back, that's a lot of their day gone. And a lot of kids don't have that much credit allowance in their schedule to allow them to do that. The one big change from this year to next year though, or from last year to this year though, is the number of kids who are taking online classes. That's probably the thing that we see most. And that has absolutely nothing to do with the courses we're offering here at the high school. It has everything to do with scheduling flexibility. I've talked to several kids who are taking online classes, and the reason they take them is because I couldn't fit this in my schedule because we're down to a certain number of sections for a certain number of classes. And the only way they can get that requirement done is by taking it online. A good example is even though we had 133 requests for economics for this current school year, we've probably got, of this 34, 25 of them are probably taking an economics class online. So it, again, that's, that's one of those things that gets a little tricky with scheduling. It's one thing to put the numbers up there, it's another thing to get kids scheduled into all those sections. So sometimes, when we're looking at doing that scheduling thing, we have to take a class that we normally wouldn't want to break into more sections just because of the number of kids who requested it. And we have to add a section so that we can actually fill up kids' schedules. One thing we can't have is we can't have a kid that's got an empty hole, they can't have a hole in their, in their schedule. We've got to have them fill. So that's kind of one of those things. So what does all this mean? This is kind of my take on the numbers for the last four years. We're beginning to see the impact of those lower class sizes, 85 to 90 class sizes. And I, and I kind of anticipated that it would be this late in the game that we would. Because a lot of the required classes for kids are done, now we're into electives. So that, this last senior class of about 100 and then the junior class of 120 or so, we're starting to see the impact that they're having on our schedule. Opportunities for making reductions, and when I talk about reductions, I'm talking about like a full 1.0 FTE reduction. Those are really going to be limited until our juniors graduate. And the reason is, we have to have classes for kids. We've got to have offerings for all of them. And, and that just requires keeping a certain number of sections available in our schedule to be able to do that. We're going to have to start looking at some point at changing or making adjustments to our current scheduling program, which is a two-by-seven, which basically means we've got two semesters in seven periods. You know, there are lots of different scheduling models out there. A two-by-seven is a, is a pretty typical, typical one. But as we start seeing reductions in the number of students that we have coming through the system, that becomes a limiting factor on what we can do. It's, again, it's, you've got seven periods, but you've got a limited number of classes to offer. We have to make sure that all those kids can get scheduled. So we've got to start thinking, is it time to start looking at a different scheduling model for the high school? And what are the ramifications of a different scheduling model for the high school? Because that is a huge, that is a huge can of worms, so... Our current course requests do provide a good opportunity for the ALC. And I know, I don't talk about the ALC probably as much as I should. In the last three years, we've cut staffing in the ALC down to where I literally have teachers that are waiting by the door for another person to come in and relieve them so that they can run back up to the high school to cover a class. It's getting to the point where it almost doesn't feel, it feels a little iffy with the way we're doing that. We have two classrooms. Both classrooms are, have about, you know, 10 to 12 kids in them at any time. It's really not a great idea to have only one staff member supervising two classrooms. We do that for about a half hour during the day. But our current enrollment numbers give us the opportunity to maybe get four core teachers for a certain period of time at the ALC next year. Math, English, social studies, and science, it's not something that we've ever had. At most, we've ever had two core people down there. Mrs. Donbeck and I have talked a lot about some of the curriculum that we offer with the, with the online programs. English is probably the weakest curriculum and is probably the area where we could really use an actual instructor in the building. And our current registration numbers very likely will provide us the ability to put an English teacher down there for an hour of instruction, which would be, which would be fabulous. be fabulous.
What are you looking at for enrollment for ALC coming up this year?
Well, that's, that's kind of a hard question to answer. You know, our enrollment has typically been seniors who are looking at credit recovery, and we typically graduate quite a few seniors out of the program. And we're always a little bit, we don't really know until they show up the first day who's going to show up. But the last two years, we've started a year with twenty-five kids. You know, when I'm looking at the kids who may be short in credits and the ones who are unwilling to come to night school or unwilling to come to summer school during the summer, I would think that next year we're going to be right about that number again, so. The other thing that we don't know at this point is what is WTEC really ultimately going to do to our schedule? We're, you know, we don't have any idea at this point. You know, again, we've had four course requests, course, course requests for WTEC courses. We could end up with the year next year having thirty kids take WTEC classes, and that would be great. But we still have to see once kids start to understand how those ITV classes work and how, you know, they start to take those and, and start to talk about them, what that impact is going to be ultimately on our schedule and our scheduling model. So WTEC does not quite fit our scheduling model. All of the WTEC schools with us are on eight period a day. So their schedules kind of line up so that they can take all eight classes without having to do a bunch of other stuff. We figured out a way for our kids to be able to take every hour a WTEC course, but it may require kids to take a study hall before or after because of the, you know, a class may start halfway through our periods. So we've got that all laid out for kids, and when they come in and talk about those WTEC courses, we can, you know, we tell them, you know, you're going to have to take a study hall before or after if this is the course you're going to take. So that's kind of some of a lot of the factors that I look at when, when you start talking about scheduling. We have, are we completely through yet? I would imagine we've still got a handful of kids who haven't registered yet, so these numbers will change a little bit. Our goal is to have a, a schedule run this spring and to have kids have a schedule in hand before they leave for summer break. That way, it can make Mrs. Hoffman's life and Deb's life a lot easier in the fall when the kids kind of want to start changing classes and things like that. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Hoffman and Mrs. Plagen. They do an amazing job with all this registration stuff, and it is a logistical, it, it's a nightmare, all of the work that they have to do to, to put into this. And just the sheer number of questions that they answer from kids who are looking at, can they take this, or can they take this, or whatever? They do a great job with that, and they help me out immensely with that. So I'd like to thank them for all their help there.
Questions?
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Okay. Jumping down to new business, we've done our pledge of allegiance. Item B, it's consideration to approve the second reading of the Cannon Falls early admission policy for kindergarten.
You looked at it the first time. We haven't had any questions that have landed on my desk. I know Derek isn't here, but nor has he. It's really a standard procedure, and with all-day, everyday kindergarten, we don't want this to become a daycare center. It's for kids that are ready for kindergarten, and, and so I would really recommend that you go ahead with this.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item C, makeup stop. Consideration to make March twenty-fourth a half-day for students and a half-day for teachers. Students will have class from eight to twelve. Teachers will work from seven-thirty to three-thirty. April twenty-first will be a full day for both staff and students. This is to make up for our two snow days.
You know, we've talked about this as well. Let's hope we don't have any more snow days, but we do need to get a certain amount of minutes and days in. So unfortunately, the twenty-first is the Monday after Easter. I feel terrible. I, I know that people already have plans, but that's been on the calendar for a really long time as a snow makeup day. The twenty-fourth is, is truly because of convenience. It was already a half-day workday for the teachers to get their grades done at the end of the semester. It works out really well. The students miss out on a half a day of school, but it's just a better choice than going in June. I mean, there can actually be some learning that can occur before testing if we do it on the twenty-fourth. If you choose to move it, and I think Ashley could even attest to this, move it to June, the, the kids are out and testing is done. So this just seems like a better use of time to me. It's a recommendation if you want to change it, and I'm fine with it.
Why, Beth, why do they consider it a half-day for the teachers when they work seven-thirty to three-thirty?
The teachers will work all day because they'll come in, they'll work from seven-thirty to eight on their own, and then they'll have students from eight to twelve, and then they will have their own work time from twelve to three-thirty. But what we wanted you to, in the notes, we wanted to say the teachers work all day. Some of the times they'll have the students, and some of the day they'll have a workday.
Okay. Motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion?
Do we have any more options, really? We don't have many options.
Next year's going to be a lot nicer. You approved a calendar that does have a spring break built in. If this was to happen again, more districts are starting to lean that way because it allows you to do that. The only other option if you wanted to do would be after, you wouldn't be able to bring your seniors back, but you would have to do it the other year. I'm worried about March. It can be snowy. We could get really creative. We're getting to the point where a lot of our students are going to have the, the devices where they can have work. I mean, you see that in other schools, where they, they can do everything from home. I mean, teacher could even be on the screen and doing it that way. We're not at that point yet, but down the road, I think we'll look at other options.
We also kind of have that, they're having a spring break next year, and just in case there's options there.
Right, right.
Let's say real quick on that count. Does that count as school time if they're able to do it on technology at home with teachers?
It does. The teacher has to be involved with it. There's some parameters that go along with it, and you can talk about the next tech meeting, but, you know, it's options that schools have run into, and I, I think the principal, there's a lot of learning going on. I don't think it's, hey, hop on your, you know, your device and play this game. There's really some great learning that's going on. It's never a full day, but you're still getting the curriculum in, and I think that's really important, and I, I think the schools that are doing it are finding some great success, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the makeup time as shown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve a retirement request at the end of the current school year.
Yeah, this is one of those that can almost make you get choked up a little bit. Tony Meyer, let me see, our student shaking her head. This is a tough one because he's just been such a, an integral part of our school system for so long. He has chosen to retire, and we wish him the best of luck, but we're going to miss him. He's a, he's a really great teacher, and the kids really, really enjoy him, and he's been through all the changes that have occurred in the social studies department. So I know I speak for Mr. Hodges and myself, just an absolute, kind of a sad day, but I also know that, you know, he's got things he wants to do and pretty excited about it, so we have to support him in that, too.
I'll make one.
I'll second Jerry.
Jerry, you need that?
Mm-hmm. I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Ben.
Brenda.
Brenda, I'm sorry. You can send it.
We do think a lot alike.
Yeah. You know, we've got a great staff here, but through the years, there's certain staff that just kind of stand out to the kids. Not that everyone doesn't, but there's just some people. And Tony is some people. And you can go back as far as he's been here, and he's made an impact on a lot of kids, so.
We the people especially, correct?
So we do accept that with a, with a heavy heart, I guess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve Megan Sabrowski as a long-term sub for sixth grade math.
Jamie Miller had a baby. She'd like to be home with her child, and Megan Sabrowski was just a perfect match. Mr. Hodges, and I have a daughter in her class, so I can attest to it, just doing a great job. So now we have two Sabrowskis on staff.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry.
Now with that, is there something in policy, how long they can take time off for?
Absolutely. It's under the medical lead. We also have kind of an agreement with teachers on call and, and the union themselves. We have to, have to go over a certain amount of days. They actually have to be brought on the contract. That's why you'll see on the attachment, you actually see that we put on a school contract versus teachers on call. It's very important that we follow those procedures as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item F, National Wild Turkey Federation is giving the school a scholarship, and it's our, it's our job to accept. You can certainly pass that around for everyone looking. To, to accept a one thousand dollar scholarship with the parameters listed here. Again, we, we're blessed that way.
What are the parameters? Very similar to others. They have to have a certain GPA. They have to hold a gun license or training of some sort. It's all listed on there. They have to be in good standing. We obviously want them to be a good role model, anyone that receives a scholarship. The student that received it this year was Austin Noble, and then next year it'll go up, because right now they're, they're doing it January one. They would like it to be part of the, the main, what's the right word? Chris, Kirsten? Award ceremony, thank you. And to do that, we need to move the timeline on this and get you to approve it, so. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion for Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion?
Just real quick, it sounds like this is already being handed out this year. How does that work if we haven't approved yet that we're, are we still able to accept scholarships?
You only approve the ones that go on the award ceremony that are, are recognized by the school district. Anyone can do a scholarship at any time for anything they want, but for us to recognize them, you have to be good with the parameters that are involved there. That was a late, last-minute ad. That's why they get a copy to all of you, but it follows all of our typical guidelines.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Reports. You know, in the past, I've, it just seems like we're so busy this time of year in this district, and I, I asked both Lori and Deb to maybe add something to this because it just felt kind of empty. But in past years, we've been cutting and cutting pretty deeply into our, into our district. Doesn't appear to be that's one of our arguments this year, so it may still come up, but we haven't spent the last month and the, the next two just worrying about that, so I guess a good thing to have done. Board members, anything for the cause?
I do. Just one thing. Going to ask a favor of the teachers that open their windows and leave them open. I hope I can stay as responsible as I can close up their rooms at night. It's their responsibility. The boilers are still running, still passing the same. That's all I am.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, moving forward, committee reports. Who has met? Policy committee?
Nope.
No, that's the last one.
How about curriculum?
No.
Facility.
We seem like we're meeting all the time.
Right. We're going to meet next week.
Next week, Thursday. We've had a lot of kind of mini-meetings, and it's working really well. I do think it's important for the whole group as a whole to know that the facility is meeting a lot, and I'm very appreciative of Jerry and Rob because they, they come out very short notice when people are able to come in, and Dave has been really dedicated to working with them, so we've been meeting a lot. Next formal meeting is next Thursday.
We'll probably maybe have something to report today.
Okay. Super tempics report.
You know, I emailed you out, kind of an update sort of thing. Sometimes it's easier to do that, so you've got time to digest it if you've got questions, and some of you do. I think if there's any specific questions, some of it was on negotiations and where we're at. Again, thank you to our, our board reps. Pat has been our lead on that and just doing an absolutely great job, and a lot of time, I think we're at session number thirteen, so we're, they're doing a really great job. But I guess the other big thing on there is I'm taking a vacation. Kind of one of my first ones, so I'm kind of excited about that. None of you said no, so.
What is an option?
Yeah, exactly. But if you have any questions, don't hesitate to email me on any of that. Sometimes it's just quicker and easier to do it that way.
Okay. Head operations, Dave?
Yeah, just got one more. Item on the facility committee and stuff like that. We have been doing a lot of work and stuff like that. I want to thank Jerry and Rob and everybody that's on the facility committee for the things that we're doing. We have some good things coming there, and I say we're going to have a meeting here on Thursday, and hopefully within the next month, we'll have some good things to report and everything and go from there, so just want to say thanks on that. And then far as facilities or whatever, today we found out that spring has sprung, so we had, had a few things that we needed to thaw out and dry up and everything, but I'm hoping that it melts fairly decent because I'm thinking about spring sports right now, and first home softball game is March twenty-seventh, and I don't know, we might be pushing that one a little bit, but all in all, everything is going into fans, so.
Thank you. Report, Tim?
Just a couple of things to give you a heads up that we'll be talking about with you in the near future is for the middle school, high school, ramp up to readiness, which is a college and career readiness program that we're going to be doing next year in our homerooms. I'll have a presentation for you on that whenever we can get that scheduled. Mrs. Hoffman and I and our, our leadership team went to our first training last Thursday, and I think we were all pretty excited about the information that's going to offer to our kids and the different things that it's going to do for our kids, so really looking forward to that. And I've been working a lot on the new teacher evaluation system with some staff, and it's starting to kind of gel a little bit, and we'll have a presentation for you at some point in the near future on that, also probably in April. That's something that needs to be approved by the teachers' union and by you as a board, so we'll kind of give you our ideas and, and take some input from you at that point, too.
Okay. Thank you. And Derek, Matt, being here, anybody have any?
He did email you an update, so check your email tomorrow. He did, he sent a nice report for you.
All right. Yep. Community ed and activity report. Jake, what do you have for us?
We've strapped up a very successful winner. Somebody picked her up, and we was both figured I'd recap. A few big wrestling, that six kids fall back at the state tournament. Three of them advanced in the title match. Paul Fitterer and Ryan Epps took second place in play of roles repeated as state champ. Dance team, this, this is the all-new section here. They were section champs and took third place in, in high kick. I looked at the breakdown, if you, mostly, mostly you know they moved up to class two A this year. I looked at the breakdown of where we were at in class two A. The cutoff for, for the number of kids in high school is like three hundred and sixty-six kids, and that's exactly the number that we have in our high school, so we, one less student, we would have been in, in single A, but to be by far the smallest school in, in double A and take third place was a huge accomplishment. Boys basketball, just wrapped up their season, and we could go Saturday. They were HBO Blue champs and subsection runners-up. Spring sports started up today with track, golf. Boys and girls track golf and softball were able to get started today. A couple of them are going to wait a couple of days to get started since we're not going to be outside for a while. On the community ed side of things, we opened registration for our preschool next year. We made a couple of changes to our preschool offerings, which I think are going to benefit kids and our teachers and our staff. We already have a fair number of kids signed up. A lot of them are new families. We did hand out registrations this year at preschool screening, something new we did this year, and I think it's already benefited our classes. Lots of new families, lots of three-year-olds getting into our preschool classes. A lot of our classes have gone very well so far this winter-spring, especially our trips have been very popular this year. We share trips with a few other communities, and we're actually borrowing tickets from them because we sold so many trips, so. them because we've sold so many trips, so. Been busy in community ed and things are going well, so.
Students report. Ashley, what do you have for us?
Well, as Jake said, the Bomber Boys and Girls Basketball finished up their seasons and wrestling was very successful. Also, the Boys and Girls Track started today. The younger groups of baseball and softball started today, but the varsity softball is waiting until Wednesday and baseball is starting next Monday. They're waiting for the snow to melt for the first game, like you said. Hopefully, softball's praying that we can get our games in and we don't have to wait really long like last year. Golf has optional practice and this Wednesday is a PLC day and activity day. And also, the National Honor Society is hosting their annual blood drive this Wednesday. And the end of the third quarter is March 21st.
Okay. Questions?
I just wanna kinda piggyback with all the spring sports coming into the school and this is probably for you, Dave. Do you have issues or problems with when they're, and Jake, with them hitting the ball and it's always hitting the floor? Do they have like a green to hit that onto instead of marking the track up? Or is that hard to get out of the track? Can you see that?
They have, I know baseball for sure, they lay carpets down or run down like that is.
Okay.
That's also, they come down.
Is that hard to get out of the floor when you do see it at all?
No, not really. And that's the new chemicals that we just started this week, which help us out. Golf, of course, has their big red stripe pass and stuff like that, which they use, so.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, I guess that's the nice advantage that we do have in this district is we have the room, we have the space, so you can't get outside right away. You're able to get some practice and then everything like that, so it makes it really nice. I mean, we're flopping back and forth between softball, baseball, volleyball, track, you know, everything like that, so, and we're able to do it and it doesn't, you know, become
Okay, upcoming meetings. We have a regular board meeting back at the high school, March 24th. Among the items on there was the consideration to approve the activities handbook. Anything else that you need to put on there for the cause?
We will have some of the contracts done, I would hope for you to go ahead and look at as well.
If for any reason you have any additions you'd like to, you'd like to discuss for any reason, just contact Lori or Beth and we'll have them put on. Public forum. Anyone wish to speak to the cause this evening?[1773.25]